We will call the July, July 28th, 2025, meeting of the City Council of Coldwater, Michigan to order. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Richmond, or the councilmember Mackin?
Present.
Councilmember Johnson?
Here.
Councilmember Canuck?
Here.
Councilmember How?
Here.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Petco?
Here.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Here.
And Mayor Kramer.
I'm here. We are all here. We have a spot on our agenda now for public comments, and we have one at the end of the meeting for public comments. So if anyone would like to address the council, they may do so now. We just ask you, please state your name. Just a minute, Charlie, I got one ahead of you.
Mayor Kramer, members of City Council, my name is Vaughn Swoboda with Third Ward. And I just, and this might be MDOT related, but if you could refer me to the right place or give an update. You know, when they redid US 12 going through Coldwater a couple of years ago, they stopped at Michigan. I know this has been talked about before. Michigan up to Fisk, you know, continues to deteriorate and is waiting to be resurfaced. I've heard various stories. Just this last week, I was over in Sturgis. And I don't mean to sound like the whiny sibling that, well, they get it, and why don't we? But they have resurfaced US 12, Chicago, from one end of Sturgis to the other. I mean, it's complete. There was no break. There's no gap in between. I mean, it literally went from the one city limit to the other city limit. So I'm just kind of curious as to why that couldn't happen for Coldwater. And really, my point for being up here is twofold. Secondly, again, this intersection out here at Chicago Street and Marshall, a division one way and the other. When you're going east to west and you're wanting to turn, say, I'm going east on Chicago, and I wish to turn north here on Marshall, there's no arrow. And the other northbound, southbound lanes have arrows. And that just seems kind of, you know, it goes, doesn't go against traffic flow, but north and south, to me, probably get less traffic than east and west. So it doesn't make sense to me why east and west would not have a left-hand arrow going in either direction, north or south, depending on what direction you're coming from. And I drive it almost every day. And I'm wanting to turn north on, here on, I always get confused, Marshall. And I'm often, or the person in front of me is often the only one that can ever make that turn because there's no arrow. And if that person actually doesn't know, or is just being extra precautious and doesn't want to even scoot into the intersection, they'll wait. And so then no one gets to turn at that point.
They're all very good points. By our rule, we don't engage in question and answer this point.
Okay.
I'm sure, no, we'll get your question. I'm sure Bobby Granger would be glad to slip out in the hall. And we will either address it under old business later in the meeting, but Bob can give you an update. We're very aware of that. Your points are very valid. But we'll have to, he'll give you an answer if you want to step out in the hall.
Okay, alright.
But thank you.
Thanks for your time.
Mr. Hoff?
Good afternoon, members of the council. I got to get this down because I was originally standing, I'm talking from my seat. I'm thinking, oh, there's a podium. With the pond across from Waterworks Park, I'm assuming that's in the city. I'm just wondering if something can't be done from an appearance point of view on maybe dredging that. I know there isn't any issues in the fall when everything freezes over. And then, of course, you've got the ice skating pond in the winter months.
No, go ahead, Charlie.
Oh, so anyways, I mean, with its current condition, it seems like this year, it's very, very bad from an appearance point of view. And being right across from Waterworks Park, I just thought, you know, maybe we could get that dredge. And then the other thing I was wondering in regards to the resurfacing, I know years ago out on Marshall Street, I think it started from state going north on Marshall. And there was a big problem with the stones that they were using for the seal coating or whatever you want to call it. And I still notice that this year where there's a lot of dust that's being created. And actually, we even had accidents out there at the time when they were doing north of Marshall. And at the same time, I mean, I'm seeing that same problem now with a lot of high-speed traffic, a lot of dust creating. And I'm thinking if they're going to do the resurfacing, you know, can it be done with a different type of stone where it's not creating a lot of dust?
A good question, Charlie. But just like before, we can't answer you now, but I'm sure our utility director is in control of that land out there. I'm sure he'll be glad to step out and give you an update on that pond, and we'll take your comments under consideration.
And who is the?
Paul back there trying to ignore eye contact with me.
Oh. Okay, I see. It's kind of like, I don't want to be here today, but I have to. Alright, thank you.
BPUs in charge of that, Charlie. Okay, thank you. I deflected those pretty well, didn't I? Any other public comments at this time?
My name is Katrina Hamlin, and I live on 106 Moore Street. And I'm here again, well, my spouse was here last time. But I'm here to speak to request the council to return the autistic child in the area street signs. My son Oliver Custer was diagnosed with severe autism and is nonverbal. For some who don't know what autism is, it's a neurological development disorder that impairs the ability to communicate and interact. Some of the symptoms are difficulty with communication, difficulty with interaction, obsessive interest, and repetitive behaviors. These range in severity. Oliver communicates in different ways without words. There, this is why the signs that I'm fighting for to be placed back up on my street and other families as well is so important. There are three families on my street alone that have kids with severe autism, my child included. I understand there is a policy in place, which I had passed around. And that was given to me when I had emailed about this issue. But I do not agree with this policy. The state policy has deemed these signs ineffective or unnecessary. I find this confusing because other neighboring communities still use these signs. I am asking for the city of Coldwater to make a change. In this policy, it states that they are not recognized by the state of Michigan or the Federal Highway Administration, and that the city has proposed to discontinue their use. We are not talking about governing interstates or highways. We are talking about residential streets. I am not saying that everybody will pay attention to these signs, but not everyone has to. Most people seem to ignore other important signs too, such as speed limits, but we can't control that. But I don't expect you to take away those signs also. Some people do see these signs and do pay attention. And it only takes one person to notice these signs, to take caution and intervene to save a child from being hurt or killed. My son likes to elope and run straight into the street towards 12. If someone sees him and yells at him to stop, he does not understand and will continue to run until someone intervenes. But if someone saw that sign, they could possibly take action and save my son or someone else's from being hurt or killed. These signs should be a reminder to first responders and law enforcement that there may be an individual close by that won't understand commands like come here or stop right there, and that extra care may be necessary to assist them. These, there have been cases, without getting into specifics, where autistic children were shot and killed because they didn't obey, didn't understand verbal commands. I want to do anything and everything I can to make sure that that doesn't happen here. If it only takes one person to see that sign to make a difference, and that would be enough for me. There is no data stating autistic child in area is effective, ineffective, sorry. My children, my other children, who know very well how serious it is if Oliver gets out into the road. They have noticed and pointed out to me why the signs were taken away. They voiced their concerns without hearing my opinion. They understand the importance, and I am here to ask the city to understand it as well. Autism is on the rise, and more are being affected by it. Statistics show that in the U.S., it is 241% higher than the baseline stats in 2000. It also shows that one in 44 kids will be diagnosed with autism, with 40% being nonverbal. I am also here speaking for the other families who can't be here because they have a child with 24-hour care needs and can't find another caregiver to leave to be here. I know this might seem like a small situation, but to us it isn't. We have so many battles between insurance, the therapies, and getting the care they deserve that this is one that shouldn't have to, that we shouldn't have to continue to fight for. We are burnt out. Why these signs, you ask? They bring awareness to certain areas. In the short time the signs were up, we had our neighbors asking and why, and we shared why. They shared with others. By drawing attention to autism, these signs help raise awareness. This increased awareness, this increased awareness can lead to more understanding and compassion in everyday interactions. The signs promote an inclusive environment, reminding the community that individuals with autism are a valued part of society and deserve understanding and respect. The presence of autistic road signs foster a sense of community, of community support. It sends a message that autism is acknowledged and that individuals with autism are valued members of society. Families with children on the autism spectrum often face challenges related to public perception and misunderstandings. Autistic road signs provide reassurance that their community recognizes and support their unique needs.
I'm sorry, I'm going to have to, we're going to have to motion for extra time. We do have a time limit, but we can extend that, but we got to do procedure.
Okay.
Motion.
Thank you. John, Jim, I believe, support by Mike. We have motion and support to allow an extra two minutes, I believe. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, I'm almost done, sorry. So it recognizes and supports their unique needs. This community, city should be doing the same, showing the community support and awareness. We as families try and do this ourselves, going into schools and reading into, reading to classrooms about autism and how to communicate and understand our kids. But a few families that do this can only do so much. These signs would help the community know that the city is supporting autism awareness. I would like for the city to show support by returning the autistic child signs in the area and for them to approve other signs requested from other people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Well said. It is on the agenda tonight, as you're aware.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? Seeing none, we'll move to our consent agenda. These are items we consider to be routine. We'll take them in one motion unless somebody up here or someone in the audience wishes an item removed for clarification or discussion. Tonight on our consent agenda, we have our minutes of July 14th, Planning Commission minutes of June 2nd, DDA minutes of June 25th, our investment reports for June of 2025, and our Rec Department Fall Activity Guide. Those are the items on our consent agenda. Anybody in the audience wishes an item removed? Anybody up here? Motion? Randall?
Move your seat.
Or, or John? We have motion and support to approve our consent agenda. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Approved. We have a public hearing. We'll open a public hearing. We'll take public comments. If anyone wishes to speak, then we'll close the public hearing and come up to council for action. Tonight, our public hearing is to consider approval of amended Brownfield Plan for vacant real property located on Carriage Circle for proposed residential housing development. So we'll open the public hearing. We'll get a brief explanation from Keith, and then if anyone wishes to speak, Keith?
Thank you, Your Honor. We have representatives from the developer here. If I can ask Brian or Joe to come forward. They're getting given overview of the project. This again is for property being identified as Carriage Circle. Resolution 25-72, after the public hearing, you'll be asked to consider whether or not to approve the plan. And I'll ask Joe and Brian to explain the nature of the project and the nature of the plan and the implications thereof.
Yeah, I don't know.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Thanks for considering us tonight. Just trying to be a brief snapshot of the project. If anybody familiar with the property, it's behind Camping World. It's been vacant for quite some time. The road already built in there. And we've identified this as a great opportunity for some rental housing. And I'll just give you a quick project brief. Basically, we're looking at 19 buildings on their three stories. They would be 228 rental units proposed, all two- and three-bedroom units. The site plan shows 365 parking spaces, of which about 40% would be covered. Currently, we're proposing 68, 90% AMI rental cap rates, units in the project in a 15-year affordability period for those units. You know, kind of a project design and amenity brief, I think the style of this project is meant to be one of a kind of a residential sort of feel where we really create these units that are made to look residential, like a two-and-a-half-story building. The appeal is important to us here. I think it will help differentiate us in our market. And what we're trying to do is create very high efficiency plans where we have, instead of having big one- and two-bedrooms, we have a lot of smaller two- and three-bedroom plans, which give people more flexibility for family members or, you know, office use, things like that in the building. As part of this project, we'll have a community building, playground, dog parks, and overall, a lot of green space, a lot of trees. So I don't know. I just want to give you a quick synopsis in that.
And hi, thank you, Joe Agostinelli, Michigan Growth Advisors. We're the consultants that prepared the Brownfield Plan. I'm happy to answer any technical questions that you might have about the plan. But a couple of quick highlights for, for council and for the public in that, you know, this is a new tool using the Brownfield program to do housing development. So that's often the first question is, why are we talking about the Brownfield program on a site that's not contaminated? And we want to be clear that this is not a contaminated site. But the legislature updated Public Act 3D1 about two years ago, recognizing the statewide need for more housing and a need for a way to create incentives to develop that housing. And they use the Brownfield program as the vehicle to do that. Wish they would have changed the name of the statute and just took Brownfield out of it. Would have made life a lot less confusing for me as I give these presentations to city council over the state. But that's why. But at a high level, yeah, the Brownfield plan is capturing the growth in property taxes that result from the project. So it is all, the current status quo is essentially maintained today. So no dollars that are being generated to any taxing jurisdiction today are being captured. Just the new taxes that get generated by the project. Over, this plan is projected to be a 16-year Brownfield plan. So at the end of that, 16 years and year 17, you have a now fully built-out development with a, you know, significantly higher tax base than, than what you have today. But the Brownfield plan is reimbursing costs related to infrastructure improvements, site preparation, and the affordable, affordable rental financing gap that is also ineligible activity under the statute. So happy to answer any questions that council may have, but we appreciate your consideration tonight.
Questions for the gentleman?
What are we doing, public or us?
Well, you know, we've, I've, no, don't tell off to me. You're right. Let's, let's take any public comments, people in the public that would like to address this. And then we'll stay up to you guys if nobody comes up. But then we'll close the public hearing and have council questions. Anybody in the public like to comment or make comments on this proposed project? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public here. And so back up, sorry, procedure. Go ahead, Jim.
I'm counting 456 bedrooms, and the property just to the south of you. I've got some firsthand experience, and it seems to just about every bedroom has at least one car parked there, to the point where we had to take law enforcement to go up there because they were actually parking sideways and across the street and on the grass over the property that you're talking about. It was a long, long-term problem. You said you're going to go 40%. Is that 40% parking spaces based on your units or on your bedrooms?
40% of the spaces are covered. We have three.
Covered. What is your percentage for spaces?
The ratio is 1 to 1.6.
1 to 1.6 bedrooms?
1.6, no, 1 to 1.6 spaces per unit.
Per unit.
So per bedroom, I don't, not good math like that.
Because that's, that's quite likely the reality versus, I understand the, you know, the stats are, this is what's recommended. But our housing up in that area seems with, there's a lot of workers living in there and hot-racking it where they, you know, shifts and staying there.
Understand. Yeah, that makes sense. You know, I think one of our intentions, design intentions, was to provide more bedrooms within the same square footage, I guess, more or less, to give the flexibility for bedrooms, but also for like home offices and stuff. I think we might find that this project in particular, we might have a higher percentage of office use than all for bedrooms. Just a thought, but I appreciate your feedback on that.
So that should be, it's not feedback or questions. So it, so your parking space is at 1.6 times 200, and I'm sorry, 228 units is about 340 spaces, is there any?
365 is the total shown.
65. Is there any, is there any overflow areas, room to expand?
I would say not with this design. No, that 365 represents all spaces that could be on the whole project, including, you know, kind of all around the street and in their own individual lots there.
And how are you guys going to handle if you have parking issues? If you have people with more than 1.6 cars, and it's overflowing, what are you here to tell us today that you're going to do to handle that situation? Because we end up coming to you first. And when towing and ticketing doesn't work? I've been down this road. I'm only, I'm that guy. Been down this road before. It was something else.
Yeah, it's a good question. I think it's something we'd have to work on. That might be something that would be worth talking to some of the adjacent property owners about. I haven't done that yet. But I appreciate you bringing that up, and that is a consideration we should address immediately.
Maybe a joint parking lot space between the two of you guys there or something. I don't know. Have we done a traffic study up there in Willowbrook any time recently?
No.
Because I know we get a lot of complaints. We're getting complaints on the, you know, the traffic arrows and the amount of accidents up there that we've heard on. You know, if you do go out there, just a difficulty getting through the lights and all that. And we're looking at adding 228 units, well, parking spaces, we're looking at adding almost 400 vehicle, probably will be 400 vehicles, to be honest with you. At least 400 more vehicles coming and going through those intersections. I'm just, and then I know there's another one on this, on this unit, and it's just, you know, are we looking at Willowbrook? We've put in a sidewalk in. Does that need a fourth lane in it out there? Or I just wondered how much we're going to shoehorn in. I know the land is there. And there's no way for you guys to exit out the back road to the east down to, through that farm field. Fisk. Fisk Road. So I think that's a, I think that's a growing concern for us, to be honest. And I'm wondering if we couldn't get a traffic study done before we start making it even worse out there. It used to be everybody would go state and come down Willowbrook. And now you, now, now that's the, can be the losing bet going that way. Not to rain on anybody's parade, but it's kind of turns that have been coming to us and to me, and that's my area out there, and I see it and I pay attention to it.
And that's where growth is going to occur though. I mean, that's where we're going northwest. It's the only place we can go, really. So it's going to happen. It is US 12, Jim, but I understand what you're saying. Questions, other questions for the gentleman?
I'm curious as to, aren't there a couple of duplexes in that area right now? What's, because the design that I saw, it just showed those. What's going on with that?
There's two houses that were built quite some time ago. I think at the time, probably 20 years ago. One of the houses is owned by the current property owner, and they're moving it before we close. The other one is not. And that is actually an exclusion in the plan. Do you see that in the lower left corner, there's the white? Okay. Lot right there. So basically, we tried to design it such that that house wouldn't stick out. More or less, it's part of the park and would be surrounded by trees. So basically, it's in that front corner, that one, the second house in would remain. Yep.
I was curious.
Yep, absolutely.
And the tax collect, the TIF is, Brownfield money is going primarily to support the rent subsidies on the 68 units that are subsidized?
Correct, yes.
Which we need in this community. So, okay. So the 200 and some will be market, market rate, and the 68 will be subsidized.
And if I may, Mr. Mayor, to councilman's earlier comment about, you know, growth and the need for new infrastructure, you know, to the extent in the future the city ever decided it needed to make an infrastructure investment in this area, you could theoretically look at amending this Brownfield plan and reimbursing the city's costs with the TIF dollars generated by it, as long as that infrastructure is in support of this development in some way. Just something to think about.
Well, that's why I'm not saying that maybe we should be doing a traffic study before we get to, you know, if we're going to have to do it.
Well, I mean, that's where the growth is going though, and I'm not sure what traffic study you're going to tell us or what our options are there. But certainly doesn't hurt to have information. Other questions for the project?
Keith, the water sewer, electoral, that was done previously when that was first set up, right?
Correct. And we have studied the effect of, the additional 228 units wouldn't have any, that's been factored into capacity for water and sewer.
And that does not require good, that does not require any lift station or anything on that side of the hill?
Correct.
To be, that just tied right in, ready to do.
Right. Any other questions?
What are they going to allow for cable, internet?
What, Jim?
Are we going to have BPU internet in your buildings?
I'm not sure how we're going to do that yet. We haven't analyzed it for this project. Yep.
What before us is to adopt Resolution 2572 and move this project along. Personally, I share Jim's concern about that congestion, but it is, we need housing and we need subsidized housing. Personally, I think it's a good project, and we'll deal with the traffic as it comes. I don't, I don't personally believe the apartments are going to be, a lot of these people are going to be going north on Michigan Avenue and on Fisk. But that's where our commercial is now out there. And I think, I don't personally think it's a bad spot, but that's just my opinion. What's your, what's your decision, folks? Any other questions?
Your Honor, if I may, too, and I'll, the city attorney can correct me if I'm wrong. But in approving this, you're approving the financing mechanism, but there is a subsequent development agreement that is, would, would come from the, after this action.
Yes, and that would.
Those things could be addressed.
Yeah, some of the more nuanced internet usage and those sort of matters could be addressed in that. And I don't, kind of off-topic a little bit, but I think to some of your concerns, I think if I remember right, the property management was also going to be done by Redstone Development, correct? And so we won't have a circumstance where somebody comes in and builds, leaves, and leaves a mess of parking dilemmas to a different party. It's one in the same. And so if there are issues, the person who did the development would probably be in the best position to analyze expansion or changes in the future.
Is there, is there anything we can do to protect ourselves for that, right, you know, while we're drying up these contracts? Because it's, it's just going to get more and more congested as we go out there. I don't say, not saying like a fine or something, but something that we could say in a contract that if they're found to be over their parking or they can't control their parking, where we could make them responsible to pay for additional parking somewhere that we see fit nearby? Or is there some type of clause that we could start putting into these?
I mean, I think there's certainly language we could have. As to the impact on US 12, we're fairly limited in our ability to do an impact study. That's typically done after the traffic is present as opposed to.
Well, I'm talking Willowbrook, not 12, but up on.
Or Willowbrook, either way, that doesn't typically happen until after the traffic that. traffic that is proposed is already present usually.
We've had two expansions up there. That's what I'm saying. We've had two and we're looking at two more to wait till there's four of them and then make the decision whether we're going to be, you know, giving whatever it is, tiffs and credits and and doing other, other, uh, infrastructure expansions and stuff for this, then to find out like, oh, oops, we, uh, we probably shouldn't have put four hundred, five hundred more units up there because we can't, it's just a traffic jam.
Sure.
And then that makes it a non-desirable place to, you know, to live.
I don't know if you don't do things because you're fearful of something that might happen. I mean, I'm not sure two hundred apartments, when you have one or two people, it's gonna, we worry about that with subdivisions that go in and then there's two or three cars an hour going and I just
Well, we know, we know.
I'm not arguing, I just say I'm not sure we don't do things because we're afraid of what might happen. And I, I know that with no assurances, I guess, Jim, I'm not sure that apartments go in all over everywhere and they all add some traffic to it. If they can handle the infrastructure, then I think we deal with the traffic with addition roads or outlets or part, I don't know. I just, I think we can't always be fearful of what could happen.
I just, I know, not to argue at the point, but what I was stating is what we have already seen, what we've witnessed, our history in that area tells you there is a congestion issue. It tells you there is a parking issue that went on for quite some time that you had to be dealt with that. Um, these, these issues are already there and we've added one more building or complex, and now we're adding a third and possibly a fourth to, to wait until after the effects is just my point that, that it would be prudent to at least consider that.
Are they in compliance with the planning commission's parking requirements for multi-family?
Right, yeah. From a zoning standpoint, it would, it would meet the minimum requirement.
So our job is to change the zoning thing on apartments if we want to do that. I mean, if they're meeting our law, then I'm not sure we can, although maybe we should, but it seems like that's what we should have done six months ago or a year ago, not we, they're meeting, they're meeting our requirement, Jim. I mean,
I, I under, I understand that. So, but they're still responsible. I, I'm letting, I'm letting them know what's happening too, so that they know, because that was, that's an issue over there. They might not be aware of that.
Uh, other questions for them? Comments, observations? Uh, they're looking at us to either adopt or not adopt resolution twenty-five seventy-two. With your pleasure.
To approve resolution twenty-five dash seventy-two.
Michael? Travis? Any final comments or questions? Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? Motion carried. Thank you, gentlemen. Good luck.
Thank you.
Uh, number eight, bills and accounts. Let's pay two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Uh, Tom? Keith, anything unusual, anything?
Uh, nearly half of the, of this week's, um, bills and accounts is one item, which is the prepaid uh, expense for the rec center flooring project, which will take place next year. And so that's the deposit on that project, uh, to to guarantee the, the current price and, uh, schedule, uh, the work for our outage or the closure of the building uh, next summer. Everything else is, um, pretty straightforward.
Okay. Uh, questions for staff?
Pay the bills.
Thanks, John. Jimmy, thanks, Jim. We have motion, I have support to pay our bills. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody oppose? That motion carried. Number nine, city manager report. Keith.
Thank you, your honor, counsel. Good evening, everyone. I'll try to get through this quickly. I know we have a lot of things that are going to, a lot of agenda items that are going to uh, dictate a conversation, but just want to highlight both a now complete mural and a soon to be a started mural, uh, downtown, uh, to add to our, the attractiveness of our community. Uh, we'd like to thank Courtney Clark for her mural on the side of the Shorty's Barber Shop Building. Hopefully you've seen the social media uh, relative to that and how nice it looks in that alley. And then secondly, uh, there is a second mural that will start in about a week and that will take place, or maybe two weeks, uh, and that will take place on the side of the children's museum building on North Hanchett Street. So those are being supported by the Coldwater Downtown Development Authority and the Michigan Main Street Vibrancy Grant Program. A number of community events are coming up. So just to touch on those, uh, the Coldwater Noon Club Anniversary Party is this coming Saturday. Uh, live music, food, drinks, fifty-fifty raffle, uh, South Monroe Street. Uh, take place on Saturday, August second, um, from six to ten. Also downtown is the downtown farmer's market. Uh, there again, an ongoing Saturday event, uh, through September. Hops on Monroe, uh, we're, we apologize for having to, uh, cancel last week. Uh, just the, with the heat indices and the, um, the, the predicted weather, uh, which did come to fruition on the storms. And so we just, the, the weather uh, for this week looks much more favorable. And so we're looking forward to a great event, uh, this Thursday. Uh, on South Monroe Street from five to nine. And then lastly, entertainment under the stars continues. Uh, this is the, um, the weekly um, concert series out at Heritage Park and that takes place at seven o'clock. And then on actual projects, uh, just a couple to note, um, Rotary Park. Uh, there, we have received notification of our Eagle permits. So now we're working with the contractor to set up the schedule. And hopefully they can get in, uh, relatively soon. Once they get all of their subcontractors back engaged. Uh, Butters Avenue, uh, that's in a delay mode. We had to do some additional storm sewer work. And so, uh, that work will, uh, recommence, uh, later this week, uh, with storm sewer. And then, uh, North Clay Street, uh, work is, uh, checked on that over the weekend and, uh, Kerbin Gunner is in and, uh, with favorable weather and some good timing. Uh, they hope to begin paving, uh, yet this week and into next week. So that project will be the first to be completed, it looks like. And, uh, the intent is still to have it done, uh, before the start of school. And for that first phase. And then the second phase of North Clay from Waterman South would begin then, uh, later in the month. Uh, that's all I had for you tonight.
Questions for Keith? If not, uh, thank you very much. Uh, number, uh, ten, we're, uh, pleased and honored to have a presentation by Insight, our hot local hospital, give us an update on what's going on. Mike, did you want to do an introduction or anything or? Or just?
Let them introduce themselves.
Okay.
Both out of town part of Insight, uh, been working with them since they first surfaced and taking over from Promatica. So, uh, Dane, go ahead.
All right. Well, uh, thank you, um, everyone for the opportunity, uh, to the council to speak with you tonight. I wanted to just first say on behalf of our, uh, corporate network, um, CEO, Dr. Shaw and leadership team, um, that we want to just acknowledge the tremendously dedicated hard work of all the staff and nurses, uh, doctors and physicians, uh, including our, our hospital administrator here now in Coldwater, uh, Rick Van Gessel, just, uh, acknowledging all of their work. Um, my name is Dane Walling. I'm the Vice President for Government Affairs across our entire network. And as I'll kind of show you briefly, we have a presence where we got started in Flint. Uh, but then also in Warren and Dearborn and the metro Detroit area. Now this Coldwater Hospital, now full service hospital in Chicago and, and a few other projects that, that I get the privilege of kind of working along, um, side of. I also have with me here tonight, just as far as following up with you for questions you might have. Uh, Irina Vula is here. She's also with the Insight Corporate and Government Affairs Division. So what I want to cover, and I know you have a lot on your agenda, so I will be brief and certainly it's your meeting. So if you want to jump in with a question or a comment that's, uh, certainly understandable. I want to tell you a bit about Insight's core commitments to patient care second to none. Give you an idea of kind of our system, um, how we operate in Michigan and where the Coldwater Hospital fits into that, um, how we work around medical excellence. But also, um, the work we do with research and development and community investment. And then some of the ways that our work has been recognized. I, I'm hoping that this can be, you know, just one of kind of many conversations that we'll be able to have. So if you have more operational kinds of questions, I can certainly take those back to our team. And then also just welcome your ongoing feedback and input as we work to serve this community as best as we can. So at the core of who we are, uh, we're a physician-led, uh, network. So we're committed to patient care second to none. We believe that kind of anyone and everyone, regardless of their insurance or ability to pay or condition or life circumstance should be able to walk through our doors and, and be treated, um, you know, in a, in a first-class, world-class kind of manner. Uh, we also think about healthcare being not just what happens between a, a doctor and a patient or an emergency room or in an operating room. But Dr. Shaw wants us to take a more holistic approach to health. And you'll see that in the work we do with research and why we invest in nonprofit youth development, because we really believe that, you know, health is, is holistic and, and communities and hospitals especially need to look at health that way, uh, so that their communities can really flourish. These are our core values. Um, you'll see things that are, are common to a lot of organizations as far as energy and execution and loyalty. Um, but because of that real sense of putting patient care second to none and treating everyone like family and wanting uh, any patient that we serve to want their friends and family to come back if they have to uh, find themselves in that situation that we, we really lift up the value of love that we have across our organization. Our love for our patients and our communities. And that's kind of the motivation that we have around the work we do and the ways we're trying to transform and advance healthcare. So our, our story gets started back in, in Flint in two thousand eight, uh, when Insight got started. Acquired its current facility, uh, around that time. So that's when I was in office. I served two terms as mayor in Flint. So I really got to see insight from the very beginning, from Dr. Shaw and his handful of staff. Uh, growing the network even in Flint to now more than three hundred people, more than a thousand across the state. So the entity wants to be, you know, a catalyst, uh, not just a place where healthcare services are provided, but a catalyst for community healing and community revitalization. And we have a particular commitment to places that are often underserved and don't have access to care, don't have access to specialty care. So we want to help figure out together what the community needs are here and how we can long-term kind of find ways to fill those gaps and provide those services. Very proud to be physician-led. That's not necessarily common in the hospital, um, part of the world. So, uh, our founder, uh, Dr. Jawad Shaw is a practicing, uh, neurosurgeon. And then our, our corporate medical officer, of course, is also a physician, Dr. Ronnie Aberashid, who's a, a neurologist. Uh, so, you know, our entire work is really defined by, you know, a, a doctor's sense of what's best for a patient, what's best for treatment. And then we try to build our systems and platforms around that. This is just a brief snapshot and I know you'll have access to these slides. That we're a multi-specialty clinic network. We have a variety of hospitals, community-based programs in Michigan and Illinois and beyond. Thought you might want to know specifically where are our other hospitals? Uh, so we have a surgical hospital in Warren, Michigan. A full-service, large safety net hospital on the south side of Chicago, then now the Coldwater Hospital. And in the coming weeks, we will be in Flint actually opening, um, a medical psychiatric specialty hospital. Uh, that'll be the first time on the Flint campus that we actually have inpatient uh, twenty-four, seven services. So that'll be our fourth, uh, technically hospital that we're licensed under the Insight Network. And we have other active projects in Ohio and Iowa and California. So very briefly in Flint, where this all got started, it's the, um, revitalized former Great Lakes Technology Center, which was General Motors revitalization of the former, uh, Fisher Body Factory Site in Flint. So six hundred thousand square feet. Uh, we have thirteen different clinics, over three hundred employees. And that initial kind of tax incentive plan that, that I especially like to talk briefly about, um, was a commitment of insight at the time to create a hundred and twenty jobs. And, you know, I was on your side of the table at that time. Um, hundred and twenty jobs over fifteen years, uh, make, uh, an investment of at least eighteen million. Uh, the capital numbers are, are way beyond that. And as you can see, there's now three hundred employees in a site that, um, was projected, which we thought at the time was actually quite good, which was a hundred and twenty jobs in the healthcare sector. So this is a group that has a positive track record. Um, and now housing these multiple divisions, including neurosurgery and pain management, imaging and behavioral health. And it'll be the site of the new Flint, um, Medical Psychiatric Specialty Hospital. That's what this picture shows. And our founder there in the middle with our mayor and other elected officials and then a picture of what that medical psychiatric specialty room will look like. This was uh, first phase was completed with a two-point-five million dollar, um, appropriation from the state of Michigan. So we're very proud to put those dollars to use. And we've actually, uh, made a request to, uh, our state representative here that we, um, hopefully could receive some state funding to improve the Coldwater Hospitals inpatient psychiatric facilities, which are licensed for kind of more patients than they're normally able to see because the facilities don't really support having a, a larger number of patients at one time. In Warren, it's a, um, surgical hospital. So these are special, uh, scheduled treatments. There's not an emergency room there. So it's different than a, a community regional hospital, but there are over two hundred employees there. Three state-of-the-art operating rooms. And has more of a personalized care approach. And then of course, uh, the hospital here, uh, your hospital, which some of you, you know, may know even more about than I do. Um, but it continues to be, you know, a nonprofit and a full-service community hospital, extremely dedicated staff and physicians. Numerous regional partnerships. The school-based clinics are especially important to that hospital and important to, uh, Insight with our mission and interest in supporting youth development. So we've been one of many voices uh, at the state Capitol, speaking to the need for those funds to stay kind of in place and stay dedicated to the school-based clinics. And, and we just know as the most recent, you know, group or banner that this hospital operates under, that it has a tremendous and significant community legacy, which, which we want to see continued for, for years to come. Uh, and a few bullets here from our executive team about the hospital. So just with all the news you're seeing about federal policy changes and what that might mean for state changes. We, we just want to be kind of loud and clear about our commitment to maintaining and growing, uh, healthcare services in Coldwater and the surrounding region. We're, we're dedicated to kind of places that are often underserved, like I said. And I think you can see that with our track record and other locations. So we will continue to kind of find a way forward through what are inevitably, you know, going to be some difficult uh, challenges. And then anytime, you know, a hospital moves from one network to another, uh, there's just an, a whole plethora of changes that have to be worked through in terms of systems and platforms. And you've probably heard some of those concerns and complaints, you know, those are things that our team is working on literally kind of every day. Um, by the time we get closer to kind of the one-year mark in a transition, hopefully those kinds of things are, are less uh, in need of, of focus and we're on to more of normal operations. But that continues to be sort of an ongoing transition. We are expecting, as you look forward, to find ways to expand services. Uh, we'll be conducting another community health needs assessment. So that's required as a nonprofit hospital by the IRS. We want to do that work anyway. We want to really understand kind of how we can grow and, and meet the needs of the community in the coming years. Uh, we have a special interest with our founder being a neurosurgeon in finding ways to grow the neurosciences and neurosurgery here. Um, you may have seen that we had this successful event with the Nurogen Network. That's a, um, a simple kind of test of potential kind of Alzheimer's risk. So we want to find ways to just meet those needs in the community, continue to invest in youth and the school-based clinics. And, and even work on, uh, challenges around maternal health. And we've been participating in the new Branch County Maternal and Infant, uh, Working Group to try to understand kind of what those gaps and challenges are. And I'll just real briefly hit on a couple of other points as we do have uh, a dedicated arm of Insight. arm of Insight that works on research. So folks are actively, including our physicians, working to kind of publish and advance medicine. And the Neurogen Biomarking Company, that's developed the simple kind of blood test for Alzheimer's and dementia's risk, is one of the things that was powered by Insight and came out of the work through the hospital and our CMO's work. So we had three actually, community outreach events with Neurogen. So Chicago, Flint, and then Coldwater here just a few weeks ago. So we were really pleased by all the community support and participation we had for that event. More generally with community engagement, Insight supports a youth program called the Sylvester Broome Empowerment Village. Some of those staff have been active in the area, getting to know what's already happening here, how we might be able to bring our expertise in academics, athletics, arts, and social and emotional well-being into different kind of community or school settings in the area. We're starting to do more now with our community outreach. So I know our team had a great time at the Strawberry Fest. We've been meeting with local area school districts. And Insight and SBEV will have a presence at some of the upcoming school open houses to help just raise our profile and get to know the community better. We're working on a food giveaway with the South Michigan Food Bank. That's something that we've done in Flint and Chicago. We know food insecurity is a need here too, so we want to find a way to play a positive role in that. And then I mentioned the maternal and infant work, just trying to find ways to connect, you know, expecting mothers with the right kind of care that they need, regardless of their background, their religion, what language they speak. We need to find ways to make those connections. So a few recognitions that we've recently received that I wanted to mention. We were able to reestablish graduate medical education at our hospital in Chicago. So there's another story for another day of the work that went into saving that hospital that was threatened for closure in 2021. Happened to be, for those of you who are interested, actually, the birthplace of now Pope Leo was actually born at the now Insight former Mercy Hospital on the south side of Chicago. So that's our hospital. So we have graduate medical education back there in internal medicine and emergency medicine. Last year, we were named by the Flint and Genesee Chamber, one of the top 10 employers in Flint and Genesee County. That meant a lot to us to get recognized at home. And the Michigan Hospital and Health Association had recognized us last year with the Community Service Award for the work we're doing with youth, and then also recognizing Dr. Shaw just for his leadership kind of in healthcare in the state of Michigan. So with that, I know, be happy to take a few questions or comments. I'll also be more than happy to, you know, follow up and meet with any of you, you know, in the coming days and weeks as well. So you have my contact phone number and email there.
Good presentation, Dan. Does anyone have any question? Randall?
LifeCar Ambulance has a contract with the county government, and they just talked to us last Thursday, and they gave us a number of 93% of all of its discharges are to out-of-county facilities. Now, I know our hospital used to be a Level Four Trauma Center, and I'm just wondering, is there a timeline? Is there anything you're doing that can help keep services here in Branch County?
We certainly are committed to that long-term. It will be a rebuilding process. So you may know that currently, like, our ICU is not able to be open due to staffing challenges. So that may be part of some of those most recent numbers, depending on what's being encountered, you know, with individual patients. So this is just going to be something that we're going to continue to work on, make note of it, and can follow up with you with some more information.
As I told you before the meeting, obviously, like the schools, the hospital is a hugely important part of a healthy community, and we're 1,000% behind you being successful. You alluded to the year getting your feet under you, the rumors over the last year of kind of lying about some bankruptcy not related to you guys, it was affecting getting supplies, or, you know, how long will you continue to contract with Promedica for like lab work and something? Or do you plan on eventually bringing that in-house? I mean, what's the, I know it takes a while to get going, but do you see a future for that? And follow up on Randall, one more thing I'll throw at you. You know, hospice and a birthing center in this county would be wonderful if it works for you guys. And I wonder if any of those things are on the, it has to be, I suppose, profitable or sustainable, but are those are a need we have. So we'll just throw all that at you.
Yeah. So I'll start with the Promedica and services question. So yes, I mean, part of that transition services agreement, you know, is that these things do all kind of take time in terms of the record system. You mentioned lab work, personnel records. So the intention is for, I mean, those will all come off of Promedica's service in the coming months. I don't have an exact kind of timeframe, but we generally have been aiming to move all of those to Insight, you know, within about a year. We took over last December, so we're about two-thirds into that process. So that is work we're actively doing. As far as these larger kind of gaps, I mean, we've certainly kind of been in discussions around the birthing center, just knowing how dramatic of a change that was and the fact that there were already, it sounds like families that weren't being well-served even when that birthing center was open. So, I mean, there just are some gaps there that we're going to have to collectively work on. I don't, I'm not aware of any active kind of plans on returning hospice, but I will also just say that this is what the community health needs assessment process is for, is because initial impressions that, you know, someone may generate, you know, in the early months of a transition are not necessarily what you need for your longer-term game plan. So we are due for this, you know, larger community health needs assessment. And I think you'll find with us that that, the data and the needs of the community will really drive what we're able to do. We will also, just kind of the last point, be actively looking as a nonprofit hospital for, you know, grants or programs or partnerships. So, I mean, there's a great deal of uncertainty right now around rural health policies at the federal and state level. If one of those policies, you know, reprioritized rural birthing centers, then, you know, we're going to be one of the first people in line to make that, you know, to make that possible as long as there's a way for it to be financially sustainable.
Yeah. We certainly wish you the best. Other questions for him? I'll, no.
I know it's early, but some of the impact on changes at the federal level with Medicare and so forth, I assume that's on your radar.
Yeah. And this is, this is just, this is going to be a challenge, and that's why I want to just first state the commitment to doing the work. And, you know, the rumors of the fate of this hospital, you know, I think have just been circling for quite some time, and we know that's not going to just go away overnight. But we're the kind of group that's, you know, in this for the long haul. The pace of the changes that are coming down is, I think, really what's in question. So there are some very dramatic 10-year impacts that have been estimated in Medicaid with the big, beautiful bill. But many of those more severe impacts are actually in years five and seven and beyond. And there's some opportunities in the bill for states to seek waivers around certain provisions. So one of the first things that may happen is an individual receiving Medicaid may need to log a certain, you know, number of hours a month in either work or volunteer or some kind of active seeking of employment. But individual states can seek a waiver to figure out how to properly implement that for a year or even two years. So one of the things that could come within the next 12 months might also not happen for two to three years. So there's just going to be a lot of questions, even state by state, about how this is handled. Some of the largest reductions in funding to Medicaid are also going to come from a state like California, which has been bringing in a much greater amount of federal Medicaid dollars because of what they've been collecting in taxes from their hospitals. Michigan's a little bit more middle of the path, middle of the road. So Michigan might see an impact four or five years from now, but it wouldn't be as dramatic as a state like California, which is, you know, kind of on the blue side of the aisle. But also a state like Louisiana and Ohio have actually very heavily used these provider taxes to bring in larger federal match dollars. So those states are going to see some stronger impacts than we might in Michigan right away. There's, there's just going to be a lot to work through. Maybe the other one I'll say, because it could be something where we're working together or coming to you for a letter of support on, is the bill also created a brand-new rural healthcare fund that's going to kind of offer a certain amount of dollars to each state. And then each state is going to develop a policy for how a hospital can then access those dollars. So that's going to be another one where we're going to be definitely in line for whether it's a million or two million or how much we can get back. And that fund is actually supposed to be up and operating within a year or so. So the idea of the lawmakers was to provide some funds in advance to help rural hospitals figure out how to navigate those changes further downstream. So you can see the layers of what we're going to be working through, but know that we want to do that together. And I realized there'd been a question about what happened in, also in Ohio and Stewart. I didn't want to inadvertently just kind of skip over that, but that was the challenge with the Stewart system, which was a for-profit network going through bankruptcy, and that had an inadvertent kind of impact on our operations in Ohio, which are currently paused and we're working to reopen in the coming months. So we're still at it, even though we had a particular kind of problem. The transition here has actually been relatively smooth, and Promedica has been a great partner in kind of this kind of changing of the banner, even though it's the same hospital, you know, from Promedica now to Insight.
You might have stated the mayor of Flint. It sounds like a simpler job than what you're doing now. Any other question for Dan? If not, we deeply appreciate it, and we, all the support we can give you, we will, okay?
Okay. Thank you. Thank you for the time tonight.
Thank you.
Pleasure speaking with you.
Number 11, a presentation by Joseph Thornburg regarding signs for special needs individuals. Joe?
Good evening. Just have a brief statement and a new document for council regarding the child warning signs. On August of 2023, City Council adopted Resolution 2369 and Policy Number P2302 regarding child warning signs and not installing any new ones and taking down any existing ones. After our most recent request to put signs up, we partnered with community engagement coordinators to produce a frequently asked questions pamphlet, which Shawna has here, just to provide greater detail, that we want to present that to the public and make it available online, just gives greater detail as to decision-making behind the policy. And cited in this document is a transportation synthesis report from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation. They cite several states and cities with policies similar to ours. If anybody has any questions or comments.
So maybe to give context, so two years ago, we established a policy. We recently had a request to reconsider the policy. We're bringing back the policy to you for your review and additional materials in which we're, we created to like try to explain the policy, but definitely the policy is yours. And the recommendation from staff is, continues to be that we not encourage or not allow the placement of these, but that's entirely up for your discussion and determination. You heard the, you heard the comments previously, and Joe and Bob are here to kind of answer any questions relative to how it's currently operating or what the current policy and implementation has been.
I had an issue in our, over on my ward where on Seeley Street, people were driving really fast, and the folks ended up putting their own little yard signs. Are those legal? It said, "Slow children."
Children's play and stuff?
Like their own, is that, is that legal within your own right of way, not the city right of way?
Correct, private property.
It is legal to put those signs out?
We haven't sought any enforcement against those, no people.
But I mean, by policy, is it?
Right.
It's, that's legal?
Not something we've really discussed in depth, but yes. I mean, what mostly we're pertaining to are, would be legal street signs in the right of way.
No, I understand. I'm just asking if that option is available to citizens, if that's, if they so wish to mark their area.
Well, there's nothing to stop a caring parent from putting a sign in their yard, similar to what we would put on the streets, saying, "Blind or autistic child in neighborhood," and we would not take that down, is what you're saying?
Can I just clarify? State regulation, the signs can't resemble official street signs, so it would have to be a personalized sign that wouldn't confuse drivers into thinking that it's an official roadway sign. It also cannot be illuminated or shined a light on, but within the parameters of sign regulation, which is actually a very robust discussion before the zoning commission as we speak, which may change over time, but right now it's not prohibited. And the child at play, little figurine that people often put out, is permitted.
Well, you guys know it's tough, and we have loving, caring parents who strongly believe that sign might help their child, and then we have information that claims it doesn't, and it's tough. I mean, I don't know the answer, but I'm not sure a sign in somebody's yard or in a couple of neighbors that would help or do the same thing if it is going to do anything, but it's tough. I mean, the parents are looking out for their children and...
I have a quick question regarding the Wisconsin study. It's from 2007. Was there no more recent study done by any state?
Most cities that have policies like ours, they actually reference that document. And even we had, they even reference in their report a document from 1988 saying that those signs, signs should not even exist. So yes, it might seem outdated, but in the world of transportation research, I mean, it's, it's...
It's the most recent?
Yes.
My question is, what does it hurt? I mean, what is the negative to having that sign there? I mean, I think about ride motorcycles. South of Mendon, for years, there was a stretch out in the middle of nowhere that said, "Deaf child," coming around a bend, and I always slowed down because I saw that sign. And, you know, it made me think, I'm looking out to see if there's some child out there who's deaf, who's not going to hear my motorcycle. And it's like, what's the negative to having those signs?
Just to be, mostly being too many signs. And then it breeds a certain disrespect for any sign, any warning sign.
And how it breeds disrespect, doesn't make any sense.
Typically, it's called sign pollution. The more signs you have, the less people are going to pay attention to them.
I can understand that, but if, if there are, you know, for example, the deaf child sign is not there anymore because obviously the child grew up and they had the sign taken down, but it was, it was on a county road.
But how did they know the child was no longer there? That was the other...
I'm guessing, because, because it was there for a number of years, and then I'm guessing the child became an adult and moved on and...
I think that was the staff issue a while ago, to put the signs up, and then somebody moves or they, they leave the area and suddenly the sign's still there and it's no longer means anything. I'm telling you, this is a tough, it's a tough issue, and I don't know, there's only... We usually come to a reasoned decision, this group does, so I don't know what your pleasure is, but certainly people are now, a parent is now opposed to put in a "slow child" at place or whatever they want to say in their yard, I mean, which seems... I mean, which seems to be as effective as our sign possibly. And then I guess if they move, the sign leaves. I don't know, you guys, I just. I don't know.
Can this be something, because I know that there's a group that's going to be doing the master plan to have this be a top of a conversation there. I think it does warrant some more in-depth conversation from.
Yeah, but they're going to look at the research and say, you know, they're not effective and most cities don't allow them. I mean, we can certainly, I mean, we can do anything you want. We can. Up to us. Right now, we adopted a policy not to allow them. And I'm not quite frankly sure why it's being brought back now, but uh we have a policy. So the question is, do we want to uh overrule the policy and change it or not?
Well, it's being, if I may, it's being brought back because you did have um a request to essentially reconsider it or to, to express their interest in in having it reconsidered and um wanting to then um review what it currently says, uh prepare some materials to, to uh if it were to be uh reaffirmed or if you chose otherwise two years later to rescind, that's entirely up to you.
Well, we need, we need a motion to uh re-look at this policy and bring us back a policy to allow signs or if there's not that, if it's not a motion, it will die for lack of support. So that's where we're at. Does anyone wish to make a motion to uh uh reinstitute and allow this policy and see if it has any support?
You know, I at least would like to see some updated studies before I think we make any decision. I mean, the idea of looking at a study that now is almost twenty years old and saying that what existed back in two thousand and seven is still applicable today. You know, I, I mean, I, I don't know that I necessarily want to immediately rescind the policy, but at the same time, I understand the concerns of a, a lot of our constituents and you know, the thing is to, to base something on something that's twenty years old. You know, I mean, or almost twenty years old. You know, I, I would like to see some, at least some additional research and brought back to us.
Well, and not to poo-poo there, to credit that, John, but we've not had a lot of calls or I don't think emails or texts asking for this. And if a person is allowed to put their own sign in their neighborhood or get a neighbor to put two signs out, there's some self do something, get involved, you know, and if that's going to help, if you believe it and help, do it. I mean, we're not going to take it down, but.
Any, any hard data is hard to find. Most people don't have anything to offer. Um the reference that we have here from the Wisconsin Department of Transportation, I have seen other cities with policies that are as new as twenty twenty-one and they still reference this.
Uh we either need a motion to uh revisit this or if there isn't one, we'll move on.
I'd like to make that motion.
To revisit this? Okay, we have a motion to revisit this issue and to uh possibly bring a policy back to allow these signs, Scott? Is that what you're asking? Do we have support for that?
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any other talk, any discussion? We'll do a roll call vote uh on this issue to see if we want to bring it back for consideration when your clerk is ready.
Councilmember Rissman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin?
No.
Councilmember Johnson?
No.
Councilmember Canat?
No.
Councilmember Houts?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazelbaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Petsko?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith?
No.
Mayor Kramer?
No. Uh motion is defeated. Thank you, Joe. Number twelve, a letter from Keith Baker regarding the proposed closure of Harrison Street for the Saint Charles Catholic Annual Festival. Uh Tim Hart wanted to be here tonight. I talked him out of it and said we would handle it without listening to him. So there is a flyer at your uh I brought a couple flyers from Saint Charles. They've done this before. It's a nice event. Um I think uh it kind of speaks for itself.
Motion.
Uh who's that? I'm sorry. Jim, we have motion from Jim to allow this?
Support.
Thanks, John. We have motion and support for adoption of resolution twenty-five seventy-four. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Number eleven, thirteen, letter from Amanda regarding the proposed sale of twenty acres of vacant land on North Willowbrook for residential housing development. Amanda?
Yes, uh this has now been on the table for thirty days. This is a proposed sale of additional land um just north of an existing apartment complex that was previously built uh by Coach Road um created by Chad Bush. This would be the same developer in question under a different LLC of Trotline. Um but would be of a similar nature and a similar design. Um and that is what is up before you.
Question, I think we still have twenty-eight acres, if I'm not mistaken, left up there uh north of this parcel, so. This is to sell, how many acres, Amanda?
It is twenty acres, uh obviously subject to a survey, but.
Questions, comments?
Yeah, this is for how many units up there they're looking at?
The current estimate is about two hundred and ten.
He did mention about more green space. I don't think the planning commission's seen the site plan yet.
No, it's, it's still in quite preliminary um.
So there would be some input for more green space. He talked about green space. I don't sure, I'm not going to mention parking, but if he's having a problem, I would hope that. So he did talk about more open spaces on this project. I don't think there's quite as many as the current project if I'm. And he's.
No, at the current one, I think it was somewhere in the neighborhood of uh three hundred.
Was it three? Oh, really? So it's smaller.
It'd still be subject to a four twenty-five agreement with the township.
Right. So we're looking for action on the resolution and agreement to complete the sale.
Uh now, if we have this, like, I've got some of my, what I stated prior um with traffic, he's got four hundred parking, so he's basically two to one uh on their parking. But the bigger question, the bigger issue for me on this one is if we develop this, this is the one we're, on this one, we will have to have a lift station on that side. And then we're going to do a TIF on this one? No, yeah. A brownstone on this one, right?
Right.
For um, is it in here?
Four to six million or something. You're talking about the number of money?
Yeah, how many years or whatever, so.
Brownfield will pay back that reach, that infrastructure, which will help that whole section up there though going north. It won't just, I believe Paul's here, he can answer that more intelligent than me, but uh I think the, the infrastructure you're putting in for this project that they will put in and, and pay for will help that area development.
No, they don't have.
Yeah, yeah. So anything, any new development that comes in north of that hill will all be fed by that lift station. So everything will drain down to that lift station. We'll pump it up to State Street, get across sixty-nine and then come back south.
And what's the estimated cost of that?
Four to six million dollars right now is what they're estimating. Uh probably more in the five million dollar range when it's all said and done. It's all based on the soil, soil borings and everything that need to be done to make sure what the quality of the soil is up there.
And then once, so, so right now, if we because we only have the twenty acres north of there, that's all we have left.
Twenty-eight.
Twenty-eight.
I believe.
So anything else would be township, if there's more development up there.
Four twenty-five.
Township would have to come back and deal with us to try and get it if we did it.
Correct, yeah. The, the way that the existing is set up is any u-utility infrastructure that is needed for those sites as they develop as they, that's part of the four twenty-five agreement, they would have to be four twenty-fived into the city as well, too.
Which we have to agree to and then that's where we could come into the, the cost of recouping or we don't have to brownfield this one because we're essentially not getting the revenue we would be getting for sixteen years till the five to four to six million dollars is paid back. Is that right?
That is, I, I'm, I'm trying to follow the logic and, and, and my pencil got off the paper, so if you.
We, who's paying? He's paying for.
The developer is.
There, but then do we have to pay him back?
Out of tax collections, yes.
Out of tax collection. So we are not going to gain four to six million dollars in tax.
Right.
So if we do this, it, it's kind of a wash now. Um, because if we don't do it, we're not getting it. How much does it cost a year to maintain, run and save for the replacement of, what's the lifespan of a lift station like this? Twenty years?
Twenty, thirty years uh with, with our maintenance. We've got lift stations out there that are longer. We're constantly doing maintenance just to make sure that these uh have a good useful life as well.
So what kind of, what's the expense of maintenance and operation and then how much we have to put away uh to replace this? What's that going to cost effectively? Bottom line, what's that going to look like best you can?
I would have to look at that, but a lot of the revenue that's being collected from the usage of that facility will start going into those funds to be able to offset maintenance costs in the future as well as plant expansion, those type of things as well, too. So any cost that's coming in off the usage of this new facility, this new rental apartment complex coming in will all be put into a fund to be able to take care of all of our infrastructure, not only this lift station, but the plant and any of the uh piping and stuff that goes out to the.
You're talking back about the brownstone money.
Yeah, no, the brownfield money is only going to pay and offset the cost of the new installation.
Hmm.
Any maintenance cost and replacement costs and everything else will be collected off of the usage from the new development.
Must be charged.
You, you've got a capital expense, you've got a maintenance expense. So all the maintenance expense will go towards the maintenance of that facility as well as replacement of that, that facility in the future. So the biggest thing by looking at this, that four million dollars will be paid by the developer so that it's not coming back on the ratepayers to pay for that, that lift station there.
But we're, but we're not getting it, we're not collecting taxes until that four to six million dollars is paid back.
Correct.
So they're, they're initially paying for it short-term upfront with the loans, but we are paying for it.
For a project that wouldn't exist if we didn't do.
If we didn't do it. And then so my question is, so that's a wash.
Right.
How much does uh those, how much do we get from these other apartment buildings over there a year about?
It, it's all based on their usage. So basically everyone's putting into the restoration of the system, so uh new houses that just get built are paying into replacing and fixing up and maintaining a system that could be thirty, forty years old.
But that, that's only going to be, we're doing this for one property right now.
Right, but it'll be four hundred or three, two hundred and eighteen units for on the wastewater side, water side, they're a flat meter, so that's all, all on them. But on the wastewater side, it'll be similar to that as well, too. All the rates are based on the same thing. So when Clemens came in and Clemens paid for their infrastructure, the usage that Clemens pays on a monthly basis on the water wastewater side goes into maintaining the entire wastewater in the water system.
So as we operate this, how much do you think we're going to lose per year? Maybe this is a better question. And with the, with this initial building, if we don't have any other building for three years, five years, ten years, township or nothing else goes up there, just this twenty unit, twenty-eight units, whatever, or twenty-eight acres. How much is it going to cost us a year or a month, whatever you like, to operate that lift station? Because otherwise we would not be operating it.
Correct. If, if, if there was nothing going there, we would not be putting a lift station. We wouldn't need to operate and maintain it.
If we do put this there.
Being, being a newer unit, it's going to have a lot less maintenance than say the big boy lift station that we're maintaining every week.
Sure.
So it, it's one of those that the newer money will be set aside. The new revenue that we're getting in from these new customers, most of that revenue will be used for older and aging infrastructure compared to newer infrastructure, but they'll, at some point in time, there'll be more money going towards that because that have aged compared to the other. So it, it's, it's hard to say on individual basis how much an individual is going to be paying for one piece of infrastructure because we look at it as an entire system. So we need to maintain that entire system.
What's the newest lift station we've got? Sealy?
Uh Sealy's a booster station for the, for the water system. Um I do not know off the top of my head what is the newest lift station that we have in our system, but I can get you that information as well.
I'm, I'm just curious, like, is, is this going to cost us an additional hundred and fifty, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to maintain this with two hundred and some units?
Over time, possibly, but being new, the only thing that you may have to do is a little bit of cleaning, a little bit of adjustment on the controls. Uh but overall, once it's brand new and, and placed, it's kind of like a car. You shouldn't have to maintain it till it starts getting so you start breaking things and parts and pieces start.
And so what, what does two hundred and twenty units roughly, similar to those other buildings, pay the BPU for that? I know it's together, but.
Yeah, that I do not have that number off the top of my head.
Fifty thousand, eighty thousand a year?
It, it's hard to say based on the usage. I'd have to look and see what they're currently, they've only been in operation for about a year and a half, two years. So it's hard to say when they actually were up to full capacity to find out what they're.
Probably not. Most is what it's going to cost us to operate it.
At, at some point in time, no.
Okay.
At, at least that unit itself, but like I said, we, we look at it from the entire system. Um by, by doing this, this also gets a, a point across sixty-nine, an additional point across sixty-nine from our wastewater system. Uh so any expansion going east of State and Willowbrook. And if we have to serve them, we'll be coming down that pipe instead of putting a, another lift station to push it further north to cut across where the Clemens system comes in. So this opens up a lot more possibilities for our system in the future because of the choke point that we have right now going south of that hill across twelve.
So I guess another question would be then is this is driven by Clemens to house their people and they've got a lift station, a station out now, lift, but whatever, a sewage station out there. How come this isn't going? This seems more like a township type of a proper place for, why isn't, didn't they say when they're coming out, they were looking at having housing out there?
Twenty acres of city land.
Yeah, I know, but. I was just looking at, if we don't have any development over the next few years up there, we're, we gotta be getting saturated at some point. Not even getting into the congestion and everything. Now we're build, we're building, maintaining, either way, we're paying for it, either through loss of tax revenue is basically how we're doing it. We're losing tax revenue for fifteen, sixteen years and then we're maintaining it for all this time.
We're losing tax revenue for something we would never have and the, the money they're paying every month for every unit for sewer and water is paying for whatever maintenance there is. I didn't, I'm missing that.
They, they basically said it's, that it's not. He didn't have the hard numbers, but.
Well, same thing we do, we, we, we do it all the time. We, we wouldn't have these projects if we didn't make this happen, but that a good question. So anybody else have questions for Paul or in terms of infrastructure?
So if I could throw this out there as well, too, these additional two hundred customers will be paying for the expansion of the plant. So I know it's not a huge number.
Right.
But two hundred added to another four thousand customers is going to lessen the burden on all the other customers for the, the plant expansion as well, too. So i- it's a give and take a little bit. It's, it's that's why we treat the system as a whole, instead of treating it as individuals saying that this customer is responsible for this. We just say this is our system so that we can maintain it as, as a whole.
Questions for Paul, Keith, um Amanda? We're looking for action on resolution twenty-five and agreement eight twenty-five and this will be a roll call vote if we get a motion and support.
I'll make a motion to adopt resolution twenty-five sixty-seven and agreement twenty-five twenty-four.
Support.
Michael? Okay, we have motion support. Any final questions for anybody? Not whenever the clerk's ready, please.
Councilmember Rissman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Canat?
Yes.
Councilmember Houts?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazelbaker?
Yes.
Councilmember Petsko?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Yes.
And Mayor Kramer?
Yes, uh motion carried. Thank you, Amanda. Number fourteen, a letter from Brian or Paul, I don't care which one, regarding the famous grease trap inspection. Paul?
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. So Brian decided to take the week off knowing that he had to come in front of you again and talk about fat soils and grease. So he, he set the muscle, if you want to say, or someone maybe can explain it a little easier. Um so at the last meeting, we talked about the reasoning for having to do a fat soils and grease um and how the fat soils and grease are affecting our plant and our system as a whole. Uh we did some looking and did some changing, a little bit of tweaking regarding the fees and the fee structures. I know that that was set up and that was a question um from the council as well, too. So what we decided and looked at doing was to uh, as of right now, which you guys have the ability to do, which if we have, comes to be an issue, we'd bring back to you is to not charge the initial fee for the first inspection. And then based on how that first inspection went, charging for additional inspections after that. And I know you're going to ask me, well, what is a failure of a first inspection, right? So one of the things that you could look at as a failure of a first inspection is one, you're not maintaining your grease trap. You're not making sure that you're going through and checking the box that you did look at it once a month. Disconnecting it would be another one. You know, you, you could have it sitting there, but if it's not connected to anything, it's really not doing anything. A lot of it has to do with the maintenance of the grease traps to make sure that those greases and those oils don't get into the system and cause problems. those greases and those oils don't get into the system and cause problems not only for the business, but also for the other citizens as well too. So we felt that that was a good compromise moving forward. It's hard to give you a true indication of every single situation that we would find that would cause for a reinspection. A lot of them, we don't see that there's going to be a lot of need for first inspections, but we gotta start somewhere. And we felt that this was a good compromise to start somewhere moving forward. Uh one of the things we will be doing as we do start doing these inspections is mapping them and making sure that we know where all those uh grease traps are so that we can move forward and keep better records and put them on the customer accounts as well too. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. If not, I know this is the second reading for ordinance eight seventy four and resolution twenty five dash seventeen.
That's a good compromise. Motion, Jim?
Port.
Port John? We have motion and support. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Bill, Brian, we missed him. Thanks.
I I will let him know also that this isn't gonna be a habit, that if he needs to come and take this abuse, he's gonna have to come and take this abuse. Thank you.
More fun with Samantha Albright regarding the establishment of a sidewalk maintenance and improvement program. Sam?
Yes, good evening, everybody, and thank you. Um so before you tonight um is consideration for the implementation of a sidewalk special assessment. Um the city does currently have a sidewalk policy already in place. It's policy number zero four zero four um for sidewalks specifically. It states as three fourths of the lots are developed, the owners of the remaining lots will be required to construct those. So with that, um we found a total of twenty eight properties that'll be impacted by this assessment. I know this isn't a common occurrence for us for special assessments, so just a brief overview of kind of what will take place going forward if you so choose. So tonight basically just gets the basics in front of you, kind of telling you what we're looking at. Um and request the public hearing for necessity for meeting number two, which will be August eleventh. At that time, you guys will be presented with estimated numbers. Um property owners that will be affected will be notified of that meeting. And then the third meeting, August twenty fifth, you'll be presented with cost estimates. Um the special assessment role itself and property owners will get another notification of what their proposed assessment will be. Um the fourth and final meeting will be another public hearing. Um we'll just a final approval of anything, of anything during that time. Um so you guys do have the option throughout this process. If you have any questions, concerns um can be brought up at any of those meetings. Um so some of those properties are going to be within North Shore, Arrowhead, Amberview Court and Thompson Boulevard. Um so at this point, the request in front of you is to have a public hearing for August eleventh um to further expand on this assessment.
Questions for Sam? This has been talked about for a few years. I think we're, most of us are up to speed on this. Questions, comments or action?
So you're gonna assess the homeowners is the plan?
Yes, just the vacant parcels will be assessed. The only area that we have to still work out some kinks in North Shore, there is a common area on both sides. Um we do need to discuss how that parcel will be handled, but other than that, it'll just be for those specific property owners that own the parcels.
They'll have an option to do it themselves if they wish to. If not, the city will do it and put it on the text.
I was I was part of this twelve, fourteen years ago, and there was a bunch of people that showed up where we were gonna force them to do it. And we're only doing select neighborhoods. We're not doing the whole city.
Yeah, these are just developed subdivisions that we currently have. We looked at this previously, but we didn't meet that seventy five percent threshold according to the policy we currently have in place. So we postponed that till now.
So new sidewalks that we've been putting in. Um who's been paying for them?
The city.
So without assessment.
So with within the, well, you mean, oh, excuse me.
You're not assessing the homeowners?
No, not for, if we decide to put on Church Street to put sidewalk years ago, we changed that policy and we cover it.
Is what I'm saying. So then we then we paid for it, but now in these other subdivisions.
Because the new home, every new home that was built here, the owner had to pay for his own sidewalk and all these subdivisions you're looking at.
You're just connecting existing sidewalks.
I know, I know, I'm all well with all.
Any new house that goes in, part of completion, um it is required for installation of sidewalks on those homeowners at that time. The city does not do anything to support that cost.
And it was decided, which we can certainly circumvent, that when seventy five percent of these subdivisions were completed, you completed the sidewalk or it could be a hundred years and they'd never get completed.
Right, so what, so what about back behind me on Thompson? Who who did those sidewalks? Because I know some 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 people had extra lots and some of it was Career Center and some of it was Builder. So who paid for those lots? We did, I thought. Do we not?
Paid for those sidewalks?
Mm-hmm.
We paid for the sidewalks on the lots that we owned and for the two houses that we developed. Um under this scenario, the four lots that remain would, or five would would be assessed for um and and the others, as those homes were built, those were installed, those were paid for by the homeowners.
So.
Like Allen Edwin Homes, when they built the Allen Edwin Homes, Allen Edwin paid for those sidewalks.
And we only take these ones because these are when are within developed areas.
That that funky corner lot on Michael and Thompson, we still own that?
No, that's a that's a ISD lot.
That's an ISD.
They own four and, or no, seven.
We're gonna charge the ISD for those lots?
That would be the.
Yes, they are on the roll currently.
They're they're eligible and the the roll as being proposed would be over ten years.
Yeah. That's about what it was like last time, and I remember them saying it was gonna be interest free and then it wasn't and there'll be interest charge on that.
Now, like I said, this is a series of four meetings, including tonight. So if there are any further questions that you would like us to look into, by all means, I can get you whatever information you need for the next meeting.
I I'd like to know all those, all the sidewalks in that the city has paid for. And then, I I don't know, I don't know. I don't know how well this is gonna sit with a lot of people.
Well, they will be, so tomorrow I already have letters formed that'll go out to all the affected property owners just to notify them. Um if you guys do approve the public hearing for the next meeting. Um so that'll give them an opportunity to come in, plus publications and the newspaper will take place and they will be notified more than once over the period of these meetings.
Questions for Samantha?
I'll make a motion to adopt.
So we have a motion to adopt resolution twenty five sixty six, correct?
Correct.
Thanks, Scott. We have motion and support. Any final questions for Sam? We'll be dealing with this several times over the next few months. Not all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you, Sam. Uh sixteen, a memo from Amanda regarding proposed ordinance amendments for beginning to bicycles, skateboards and roller skates. This is just a fun night, isn't it?
It's just the way that worked out the way.
It's a hot topic.
Yeah.
Um so we had roads, we had sidewalks, we have developed now electric bicycles and electric scooters. Um this is an ordinance amendment that came at the request of the police department. The ordinance on the books as it existed only regulated traditional bicycles, roller skates and skateboards, and as you may have guessed, was drafted in nineteen ninety one. Uh it has been updated since then, um but not to reflect recent um implementations of electronics into those sorts of devices. And so our current regulation uh does not regulate electric scooters and electric bicycles uh which the city does frequently receive complaints about, particularly in the downtown area. Uh there is some regulation by state law. Uh but that state law largely defers back to the local government and gives us authority to adopt these types of regulations. Um and so that is what is before you guys today. Um but largely just implementing regulation of where those types of modes of transportation can be used, how they can be used and what sort of guidance we can give to the general uh public about usage that complies with state law uh and helping our police be able to enforce um these types of regulations as we do receive frequent complaints.
Move to approve ordinance eight seventy five. Mike?
Introduce.
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 That'll be a second reading.
John?
Introduce.
Mike and John? Questions? They'll give me back to this.
Well, the only thing that bothers me is when you see somebody on an electric bicycle on a sidewalk doing twenty five miles an hour. It's like what happens when Granny steps out from behind her bush? You know, life is gonna get interesting there real fast. And potentially comes back to haunt us as a city, so.
Anything other question? We have motion, we have support to introduce this. Was there a speed limit on this?
There is, yeah, a speed limit by state law that we can adopt.
So in certain areas.
Hey? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Number seventeen, a letter from Keith regarding proposed change order number one to the North Clay Project.
Thank you, Your Honor. A couple different changes are proposed as part of this request that came about last week. Um as this would, and let me differentiate the project that's currently under construction. This is not, this does not pertain to that project. This is the subsequent phase two project which is scheduled to take um begin and take place uh later in August. And so that project uh was awarded to Nashville Construction uh in just over one point four million dollars for that contract. And um there are both water funds and uh city, street and infrastructure funds, uh because that too includes additional extension of water main. Uh in looking at that uh subsequent to, as we're preparing for this second phase of the project, uh the concern was raised about the storm sewer in and those subsequent blocks of um North Clay. And so with that, uh they videotaped uh the storm sewers and inspected them again. And um now we're proposing to uh replace the storm sewer, which wasn't originally the case uh for that section before going through the effort of paving, milling and paving and replacing the water main. So uh the first part of this request is the inclusion of storm, eight hundred and sixty feet of storm sewer and seven manhole and catch basin structures as part uh to the tune of a hundred and twelve thousand and ten uh one hundred dollars. Um there are funds available. Uh we continue to have um substantial interest income uh on our investments, uh capital improvement funding and some remaining road bond funding as well as the water funnel uh has for its existing uh water commitment on that project. Secondly, as part of this project, while much of it is entailed for North Clay, uh that same contractor, under that same contract is responsible for milling and paving a number of streets within the community. Uh one of which was going to be South Monroe Street. We thought it'd be nice to repave that. Um there are, I believe it's seven, seven more lead water lines that have to be replaced there and with the their schedule and our event schedule on South Monroe and the shortening window of time this fall, we'd like to postpone any work on South Monroe and um transition it over to extending further the work that we were already planning to do on South Clay and uh extending the full repave of South Clay essentially from West Pearl, South to the bridge. And so that work would be an additional seventy three thousand and nine hundred and ten dollars and eighty cents. And so that would be taken out of our local and major street fund, uh which we do have uh funding available for, so. The combination of those two two changes uh incorporate a hundred and eighty six thousand, ten dollars and eighty cents. Um it is, we are recommending that this work uh be done. Uh South Clay is one of the uh the lowest scoring streets in our system and uh we're in in a couple different ways, we're uh we are changing the project to accommodate a better improvements to South Clay as well as the section of North Clay with the additional storm stormwater infrastructure work. So you'll have a essentially a brand new, almost a brand new North Clay from Brand uh to Harrison and then from Pearl, South Clay from Pearl uh to the bridge. Uh to effectuate that change, we would need you to consider adopting resolution twenty five seventy three.
That would mean one one of us have to say something. Chad? Chad, thanks, Jim. Okay, we have motion, we have support to adopt resolution twenty five seventy three. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Uh we have a last spot for public comments. If anyone would like to address the council, they may do so now. Are there unfinished business at council level? Before we bring up, is there any other new business other than one on the agenda? We do have a request to go into closed session pursuant to section eight E of Public Act two sixty seven of nineteen seventy six to consult with our attorney regarding trial or settlement strategy in connection with the Thompson Construction versus City of Coldwater. You know, motion to go into closed session and it's a roll call vote.
So moved.
Thanks. Michael, I believe? Yeah, thank you. John, okay. John and Chad, when you're ready, take the vote, please.
Councilmember Rissman?
Yes.
Councilmember Mackin?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Councilmember Canuck?
Yes.
Councilmember Halt?
Yes.
Councilmember Hazel Baker?
Yes.
Councilmember Petsco?
Yes.
Councilmember Beckwith?
Yes.
And Mayor Kramer.
Yes, we're going to close session. We'll reconvene when we're done. Thank you. Thanks, Samantha.